Hey. Welcome. It is six oh five on December sixth and we will. For the red to order, the first item on our agenda is public comments. The North reporter welcomes public comments. We ask that all commenters limit their comments to five minutes or less. And we'd like everyone to know that is our policy that we don't directly address public comment at the time that it's given, but rather take it in and respond when necessary after the fact. So we have a couple of members of our of the public here with us. If anyone want to say something?
Did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go first.
I um I talked to Mary Beth, so I'm just not sure if it was implied that there's going to be a public forum to go over the strategic planning for the school.
Well, we haven't, we don't yet have something scheduled for that, but we'll think about that and talk about that.
I'm just wondering if there's a plan to address the viability of continuing to run the school the way it's being run and at the window enrollment. That's really my concern.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Peter Griffin. I have a comment about the minutes of the meeting. In comparison to other committees, there's not much minutes. I'm not sure if some of those, I know that sometimes things are submitted, they're put on file at town hall. There's no indication on the minutes that anything's on file. Even when on the principal reports and superintendent reports, there is nothing, there's nothing. And looking from the minutes, I went back last year. I wouldn't be able to tell you what you guys talked about. Not even, I can tell you what your topic was. But it's very, 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 very difficult to figure out what happened at the meeting if you're not here for some reason and you can't go online. And these are compared to other committees in town.
Okay.
Should I use the rest of my five minutes?
Yeah, we'd like to. It's your floor.
Stop and shop if you want.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for your comments. Okay. Sorry, I'm just writing some notes. Okay. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November sixteenth. Everyone should have received those minutes in their packets.
I'll make a motion paper for those minutes.
Let's see, all those in there. Okay, we do. I know that John and abstentions. Because you guys weren't here. Well, Kathy's not here, so I'll write that down.
Do we need a second?
What's up?
Do we need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the only one who can.
Thank you. I tried to write notes and then got all confused, so I'm glad you're back. We had a motion made by Janet, seconded by Amy to accept the minutes. And it was approved, but we had two abstentions. We had John and Donna. Okay. Okay. Next on our agenda is correspondence. I don't believe I have any correspondence that I need to share with the with the board, so we'll move on to the superintendent's reports.
So Lauren and I have a lot to share with you with these things, so I'm going to, you know, I don't have a lot to report. We've got policy to discuss, we've got data to discuss all of the the motions that we have to make, so I will hold off in the first few conversations on those topics and let Lauren move on to the presentation, so there's a timely meeting for you all.
Great, thank you. Okay, and Lauren for the principals' report?
Yeah, so like Mary Beth said, I'm going to present to you the student growth and achievement data. There was a slide right there and you required about the data that I shared via email and it was at that, okay, where it is? So that's here, if you could pass it around, and this is our three-year Boto school continuous improvement plan, which will be briefly referenced during the present session. Um, and this is my principal's report. If you have any questions about it. So this is a presentation about only our standardized achievement and growth measures from last year. I want to, before I begin, give you some factors to consider. First of all, standardized assessments are not intended to be the sole measure of a student achievement, program evaluation, or school district and state accountability systems. They are not to be the sole source of guidance for curriculum or instructional curriculum, and they are not a substitute for a wide variety of other relevant aids to assess student learning and growth. Other factors to consider. Small class sizes, one student can make up seventeen, seven to seventeen percent of the data. And our student needs vary greatly from cohort to cohort. And this is all on this piece of paper in front of you. Also, here's just a snapshot of information about our high-need students. Over the past decade, our students receiving pre-introduced lunch has increased from sixteen percent to forty-three percent. And students receiving special education services has increased from fifteen to twenty-one percent. And then finally, the last factor I want to bring before you is about mobility. And here's just an example from our upper intermediate students. So less than half, ten of twenty-three of our current upper intermediate students were enrolled at Boto from kindergarten to the current grade, ignore that nine, that's in favor. So that's all important information to consider as you listen to this presentation. So I'm going to report on the smarter balance assessment and the STAR assessment and give you some information about how we're going to work to continue to improve student growth and learning. This is very fussy. Okay, so here's information on the smarter balance. So like I said, those are all the things that the smarter balanced assessment is intended to do. We take our student performance results very seriously and we recognize that they are a snapshot in time of how they're achieving and how they're growing. It's not intended to be a substitute for those things like I've already mentioned. And here's information about performance. So there's two parts of the smarter balanced assessment. There is the English Language Arts and otherwise known as literacy, and there's math. All of the Common Core state standards are assessed through these claims. There's a claim that is relevant to reading, writing, and listening. So those are the three areas in which a student's performance level is calculated. So students need to show that they can read and understand a variety of complex, great, appropriate informational and literary texts. In writing, they need to be able to write and revise all the three types of writing using evidence from source materials. And in listening, they need to interpret and use information delivered orally to determine main ideas, summarize, and analyze. So this is our smarter balanced ELA results over the past five years. So you can see that prior to the pandemic, we had a nice steady trend of growth. And then since the pandemic, we've had some dips in performance. So currently, last year, our third through eighth graders, forty-seven percent of our third through sixth graders, forty-seven percent of them met or exceeded the goal measured for all of those three areas of English language arts. This gives you a little bit of cohort data, which looks at the same group of students over time. There are some gaps in this again because in 2020, we didn't assess using this because we were closed. And the color coding tells you what class, what grade they're currently in. So for example, the class of 2026 is gray. And this is their growth line right here. These different colors represent their performance levels. This is level one, level two, level three, and level four. Level three and level four are meeting or exceeding. This is approaching and this is below. So you can see the trajectory line for the students who are currently freshmen. This is, the orange is our current eighth grade students, so that's this line right here. The purple is our current seventh grade students. The turquoise is our current sixth grade students. So again, they start in fourth grade because they were third graders in the pandemic. And then the dark green is our current fifth graders.
Lauren, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Can you explain to me why the level one, two, three, and four are increasing in their value as we progress?
That's because each year it's more difficult to achieve that level because we intend our students to grow in their ability to do this work. So this is the scale scores on the side. And so while, you know, the scale score for level three is somewhere between twenty-four hundred and twenty-six hundred, it rises as the grades increase.
Thank you.
So so what nominal trajectory would be like, say, the bottom of the green, to the bottom of the green, to the bottom of the green?
That would be the trend we would want to see, absolutely. Or bottom to middle to top to be.
Yeah.
But a nominal
If they stayed.
Progress would would be going from the same point on each one of those bars to.
Yeah, they have to grow in order to make that to achieve. Are all these kids on here, like I said, great, not freshmen? Those are kids that came from Boto. Yes, so these are all Boto kids. These are, yes, so the gray, you know, freshman kids are third graders when they were at Boto, fourth graders at Boto, fifth graders, and sixth grade, they were not assessed.
Because of COVID.
Yeah.
So that's why that line stops.
Yep, or is interrupted.
Or there's a long, like the, there's no points in some of them, like the orange one.
Anybody have any other questions? This is also kind of gives you a snapshot of our school-wide performance over the course of several years. So again, the colors represent not meeting, approaching, meeting, and exceeding. And this starts in 2017, eighteen. So the lines kind of give you an example of, you know, how our students are shifting throughout the years, so we can look at, you know, growth over time as a whole school. And again, from twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we saw a lot of positive growth. We are going to get back to. So here comes the math part. The math is also, all of the state standards condensed into three claims. Students need to be able to communicate their mathematical reasoning. They need to demonstrate conceptual and procedural understanding, which means they understand what the math means and they can actually do the math. And then they have to apply their math knowledge to solve real-world problems and analyze data. So again, this is our percentage of students meeting and achieving or exceeding. And last year, we had forty-three percent of our third through sixth graders meeting or exceeding the goal. Whoops. Sorry about that. This gives you a trajectory again for the math cohort data. Same grades, I didn't write that at the bottom, I apologize. And same kind of slide for math.
Second question, sorry. So on the bottom, we're in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, the red are not met.
Yes, those are students who.
Have not met.
Yes, they're at level one. And the yellow are level two. They're approaching the goal. Green is meeting and blue is.
Do you think the gap between twenty twenty-one to now that there's more kids not exceeding because of COVID?
Well.
Or being approaching?
I think that there are a lot of factors that contribute to that. So, you know, I'm sure everybody's heard on the news about the need to borders and how those have continued to, you know, struggled to rebound from COVID and that that very well could be the case with this data too.
Do you have an idea of how these charts compared to charts in other schools?
I don't. I haven't looked at that data yet, but I certainly can.
I think these are great charts. I don't remember seeing it quite this way before. Do you know, are these standard charts that other schools use if I was going to try to compare apples to apples with that being possibility?
All of this data is on the, so there's a public website and then there's a secure website. So when you get down to more specific student level information, I got all of this off of the secure website. So I can only access this per hotel, but the public website has different information that can be shared publicly. Most of the time, especially for schools in our region, that public website is not going to be able to share a lot of information because of student privacy. So when you have fewer than twenty students in a cohort or in a group, you'll usually see an asterisk next to that grade level because they can't publish that again for soon privacy reasons. So you might not get a lot of information from that public site for that reason.
Do the, do the principals or superintendents of the school ever talk about these performance data charts together?
Yes, yep, and all of our student level data is shared at the beginning of the year with all of our staff. We, you know, look for trends and analyze things at our PDEC committee.
No, I mean with the other principals, not, not alone. I mean, I know.
Do we do this with the other principals?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, we don't typically do that. Yeah. Especially since the pandemic, you know, I think. Because there was so, you know, there was a lot of caution around really digging into this data after the first year of the pandemic. They really used the the purpose of giving the smarter balanced assessment last year in the middle of a pandemic was more to get a new baseline from which schools could then plan and move forward. The other standardized assessment that we use is the STAR assessment. It doesn't test all of the same areas that the smarter balanced does. It tests reading and math, and we use that assessment three times a year as another tool to monitor how our students are growing. And when we have that data in real time, like you give the assessment and then you can pull up the data right off the website, we use that to say, okay, is this an accurate representation based on all the other things that we know about the student? How long did the student take on this assessment? Did they take two minutes and that explains a lot? Or did they take thirty-five minutes? Do we need to dig any deeper to see what other strategies should we use at the classroom level? Does that student, based on all of the data, show us that they need some academic support through our SRBI program? So we use this data a lot more than the smarter balanced data just because the timeliness in which we receive this data is much better. And we can get a lot more information at a granular level.
I think it's important, Lauren, you just kind of mentioned that the smarter balance is a timed test. So it's often when we look at student and we look more at an individualist level when we're looking at student data. And, you know, if you look at a student who was approaching or didn't meet grade level, but then you look to see if given more time, do they know it or were they just not able to perform in that timeline? So this is just another way to really confidence in where we actually are and do they need more instruction? Do they need more time to demonstrate what they know? So there are a lot of things that we look at as individuals that you can't pull out of and a big helicopter kind of pictures.
And the STAR assessment, because it is timed, is one of the things that we are looking at to see. It really stresses our students out is the feedback that I get from our staff. There's a certain amount of time that you're allotted, and then as the time elapses, a little clock comes up on the screen for the kids. And because that isn't the way the smarter balanced is delivered, it also impacts the performance. So one of the things that you'll see on our continuous growth plan is we intend to look at some other equally reliable assessment tools that aren't timed so that we can take that into consideration as well. Because we all know that if someone's feeling stressed, they're not going to do their best.
I feel like that wouldn't be very accurate.
Pardon?
I said, I feel like that wouldn't be very accurate because not a lot of people perform under stress.
Exactly, exactly. And the the nice thing about the smarter balance is kids can have as much time as they want. That doesn't mean they always put in as much time as we would like them to. But the the opportunity for kids to really take their time is there.
Do they?
So that's a drawback for this assessment.
With the smarter balance, they have like overall time as much as they want, like they can spend an hour longer on the test if they wanted to than they need.
Yeah. And so, yeah, so kids who need more time, we plan extra, you know, sessions for them. So they can finish. So the, I just talked about the purposes and why we give the STAR data or STAR assessment, and here's our STAR student performance. So this is only for reading. It does not assess listening or writing, which is another drawback because it's nice to get a snapshot of the whole student's literacy ability. So we started giving this assessment in twenty sixteen, seventeen, and we saw some really nice growth typically. And last year, sixty-two percent of our students in the spring met or exceeded the reading goal. In math, only thirty-seven.
Yeah, on the reading one too, because it seems the same like in two thousand seventeen, eighteen or ten. Was there something different we were doing where there's eighty-nine percent versus sixty-two percent, or is it the same test or did the test change?
The same test. Again, I would say, no, there isn't much different than that we are doing. I would say now, one of the things that we have in place that we didn't at the time is in the primary grades, we have anemic awareness program that we're using to bolster up our students' foundational skills. We have different assessment tools, but our curriculum, the approaches that we're using, you know, we, we started to implement a really strong data analysis protocol that we still, you know, that we're restarting again this year and have been doing last year as well, but.
Platform's still the same.
Platform is still the same because the test itself is still the same.
And when in the year are the, are these different tests given? So like, I'm just trying to understand exactly where the COVID piece falls.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep. So this assessment is given three times a year in September, January, and May.
Okay.
And the smarter balance is given every year in May.
And this just reflects the spring assessment.
This just reflects, yes, this is the spring, this is the end of the year assessment due. I will say very often in the middle of the year, we have different, you know, different results, and sometimes they're higher and then they're lower at the end of the year, which is again, another one of the things that our staff doesn't like. Because an example of that is say, Mary Beth took the reading assessment in the winter and she did so well that her scores looked like an eighth grader. Well, in the spring, she's going to get all eighth grade material. And then if it doesn't, if she doesn't improve to be like a tenth grader, then that growth isn't reflected. And, you know, you can see kind of a dip in performance. So there are other assessment tools that you can really look at growth over time that are more like the smarter balanced at a year's glance. So we are considering some of those because again, we want to make sure that this is one piece of data. We always check this data with our other curriculum-based measures. This is not the only data that we use. And there is very often the case where we know that certain kids didn't perform as well as they could, and if they had, based on all the other data that we know, that number would be higher. So I would say when we analyze that data, very rarely would we look at a student and say, oh, that's a false positive test, like they should have done way worse. That doesn't ever happen. But I can say with a lot of confidence, there are many times where we look at a student's results and say, what happened that day? You know, sometimes we'll give the test again, but other times we have so much data that supports that student is working at or above grade level, there's no reason to give them another test to confirm what we already know based on all the other things that we know about that student.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So like the eighteen, nineteen year.
Yeah.
How many kids were taking that test as opposed to the twenty-one, twenty-two? That has to have a big impact on these numbers.
It can, and I can tell you that one of the purposes of getting the STAR is as a screening tool. So some of our students who have the special identification of dyslexia, we already know that this test is not going to give us any new data. Reading fast and quickly is not a skill that students who have dyslexia possess. So we don't use this tool all like in the twenty eighteen, nineteen year, those kids didn't take this test because we, we already knew what we needed to know from that data to make instructional decisions. However, those students, then then we made it, we changed course a little bit. So last year, all of our students, regardless of their special education identification, did take this. So we can have a more clear picture of the goals.
So has that always, so up until twenty-one, twenty-two, only certain kids took the STAR and now in twenty-one, twenty-two, everyone's taking it?
Yeah. But I would say that number is like three. So but again, three percent, three students can sometimes mean as much as seven percent. But it's not a great number of students who haven't taken the assessment, but I just that's, that's information you should have. The smarter balanced assessment, all students have to take regardless.
The two thousand eighteen, nineteen year, we had more students in Boto that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And these are given through for kids K through six, not just three to six?
Yes. Yep. And with the math, it's a first through sixth grade assessment. There's a little smattering of math on the K, but not a lot. So this represents our first through sixth grade students. And in that packet that I shared with you today, you can take a look at how our primary students are performing on this assessment as like compared throughout the grades because that's an important point too. This is an assessment that all students are taking, not just third through sixth. So we also take into consideration and look for growth over time. And the smarter balanced, last year, we didn't have any growth scores because they were restarted in the assessment. This year, we do have growth scores and I'll share those with you. There are two growth scores that are calculated and reported. So the growth rate, which is based on a target. So say I take the math assessment, I get a scale score of two thousand two to a category of achievement. The state then says, okay, Lauren, in order to meet your growth target, you need to grow by The state then says, okay, Lauren, in order to meet your growth target, you need to grow by forty five points. And if I do, then I get a growth rate score of a hundred percent. Um, if I don't, then my percentage of growth is based on how much of that number I achieved. If I only achieve half of forty five percent, my growth target is fifty percent. Those are set by the Connecticut State um Department of Education. Um, and are characterized ambitious yet achievable individual student targets. Oh, no, that's either growth rate, you either achieve it or you don't. The other one that I was talking about is the percent of the growth target achieved. That's where they take that number. Um, and they say, how much of that growth did you achieve? So now I just completely confused you. I apologize so much. But I'll talk about those things again when we see the data in the slides. So this is the ELA growth scores again over the years. So um. The average percent of the target achieved is that analogy I was just giving where if the state says. Um, you need to grow forty five points on the scale score. But I don't, and I grow forty five points, I would get a hundred percent of my target achieved. And that would be averaged into that green. Bar. If I only achieve fifty percent of my growth target, that fifty percent is averaged into that green bar. So the good news is, is that from. I forgot to check off the. Oh, no, no, I didn't. So from twenty eighteen nineteen to this past year, our student growth has increased with ELA. The growth rate is, did you achieve that growth target, yes or no? And again, we're showing some growth in that area. We're not back up to pre pandemic levels, but the trajectory is positive. Is that all clear?
I think that's confusing to me about that is though our scores went down. So how did they achieve their growth rates if our overall scores went down?
Because. That new reset of whatever their scale scored was. It isn't reflected here because that's where the gap in the data is. So when they took. When they. When they took the test in twenty twenty one. They didn't have growth data. Now that we have growth data, even though the scores are lower, it doesn't look at performance. It looks at growth within that performance. So they're two separate topics. You can, so a good example is, is that. Say that I'm a swimmer. And I jump in the pool and I, well, I won't sink. But I won't get very far very fast, but then I keep practicing. So I have this this split time, right, like that I do in a freestyle stroke. Say it takes me two minutes to get to the end of the pool. That's my performance, but I'm gonna grow off of that performance. That performance is terrible. Who takes two minutes to get to the end of the pool? I'm just making it, I don't even know, I'm not even a swimmer. But then I keep practicing and then next year I do that same test. And now I'm at uh two minutes and fifteen seconds. I've grown, I'm still, okay. What?
A minute forty five.
Okay, thank you. A minute forty five seconds. I've grown because I decreased that amount of time. But it's still not, you know, Olympic, um. Whatever, worthy. So. It has nothing to do with performance, it has everything to do with where you start. And then where you finish the next year.
I do understand that, I just kinda don't understand how that could. Kind of work with the overall score going down. Cause your score in your swimming got better.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So if your score got worse, but your growth, you still made your growth.
But when you look at me and and she, so if the time to make that gap is to meet goal would be a minute and a half. She still took a minute forty five, so she didn't meet goal. So performance is gonna be reflected, but she did grow. So the growth score is gonna look positive. But she's, the the big bar isn't going to grow because she still didn't meet or exceed the goal. She's still below.
It's possible to increase your own personal score from one year to the next, but because the. Bar to meet that progression level rises as well, you can make growth, but now fall into a lower category.
Yeah.
At the same time.
And keeping in mind, and again, I say this at the risk, I I we don't make any excuses for any of this. But when you look at the, what a small number can change our percentage. And the growing rate of kids who have special needs, the growing rate of mobility in the district. So we have many kids represented over the last year or two who might have moved here in third or fourth grade. And so we didn't have them for those years. We've had kids, you know, who have moved in with IEPs and we've identified some kids. So when you have children who have specific needs, reading needs, math needs, they're usually the two areas in special. And they're all taking this test. They're all factored in together and those kids are growing too, but again, not at the rate that, you know, um. A lot of kids might so.
And I have a little bit of data around that. So there are twenty three upper intermediate students. Twenty of them took, were at hotel last year and took the assessment with us. Of those twenty students. Ten of them have been with us since um kindergarten. Of those ten students, seven of them. Um, met or exceeded goal in ELA and five of them met or exceeded goal in math. The other ten students who came to us at, you know, they came to us as fifth graders, they came to us as third graders, whatever. Four out of those ten students met goal for ELA and three. Maybe two of those students met, I I wrote it on a post-it and I left it in my office. But that's a big difference when you think about the students who are with us, and that's not all the time. Uh, you know, but I think that that's one example of how that mobility and that, you know, um. The instruction over time at motel has an impact on how students are performing. This is the math growth scores. So again, some nice average of the percentage of the target achieved and a little bit of growth with the growth rate overall. So we're moving in the right direction. Um, this is a lot of dolly book about the student growth percentile for star. So star also gives us a growth um goal and the goal is um. We want students to grow anywhere from thirty five points to um sixty five points. That's considered typical growth. Um, anything over sixty five points is considered high growth. That's ideally what we want. So we use this growth. Data to look at, are our students growing as we would expect? So with the reading and and this is kind of where your, you know, you're kind of. Um, original thinking bears fruit. So we were growing, growing. This is that big twenty eighteen nineteen um performance year. And then the growth dipped a little bit last year. And then this year, our growth did not maintain the the same trajectory. So the same with math. So only fifty three percent of our students last year made typical to high growth. And only sixty one percent of our um. Students made typical growth for reading. Well, it's not only, that's, you know, more than half, but. Okay, so then the next thing we do is as a staff, what do we do with this data? So you have. Or not yet. Um, one of the things that uh. I I've summarized a lot of our strategic actions that we're using. Um, to help our students grow and achieve at higher rates. So these are summarized as part of some of the action steps in that three year continuous growth plan. One of the things that is a really high leverage strategy. Is that we make sure that we're looking at a wide variety of data. So this year, um, teachers are uh kind of completing a. Class at a glance, um, data charts that looks at. The star and the smarter balance, but other um benchmark assessments and curriculum assessments. So then we have all of that data at a glance. And then we use that data during impact teams, which is a time where um teachers get together with either myself. Or Shiloh, our math specialist, and we analyze that data. How did this student do? What do we need to teach them so they continue to grow? How did this student do? What do we need to do to teach um that student so they grow? So we really look at all of our students, from our students who are performing um at the level one. All the way up to our students who are performing at a level four. And we don't just focus on the kids who aren't meeting, we focus on the kids who are meeting and are exceeding. Because we wanna make sure that they have um the just right instruction that they need to continue to grow. No matter where they are in that continuum. Or also, we've been using the smarter balanced interim assessments. Those are um. Tools that we can use that follow up on a unit of study. For example, the comprehensive smarter balance assessment that the kids take, assess a wide variety of skills. But if you are a reading teacher and you've just finished teaching your kids about um literature. There's a literature um interim assessment that they can give. That then they can see, how did they do on this? What do I need to reteach? What do I have to work into my instruction more? So they have some um assessments that are really useful tools for instruction. And um reteaching. So those are some of the actions that we're taking. We're again, one of another high level strategy is that teachers. And students give very specific actionable feedback. Rather than when we were in school, you got a red star and good job, that's not very helpful. Um, or if you got a big minus and a frowny face, not very helpful. But if you can say, hey. In this narrative um reading, you need to pay closer attention to the overall author's message. Here's how you do that. Let me show you. Now you try it. So that kind of specific feedback that is geared to specific skills. That shows them exactly what they need to do to be successful. And then the teacher watches them apply that is the kind of feedback that we are um giving to students. Then they take that feedback to improve their work, which again, then improves their overall learning. Um, the other thing that we're working on is with our illustrative math curriculum. We are aligning the end of the unit assessments to our report card. So again, at the end of the unit, we're gonna look at who's below standard. Who's approaching standard, who's meeting standard and who's exceeding standard? And we're looking at the skills taught in that unit. And we're um looking at, did they on that assessment meet the the. Unfortunately, they don't give us those resources, so we're creating them ourselves. And then when we, at the end of the unit assessment, we're gonna be able to communicate with students about how they did on the learning of that unit. And also communicate to parents, so they have a better understanding of what specifically. Their child still needs to work on, so they can help them at home. We're utilizing, um, like Amy mentioned last time, one of the teachers. Uh, the teachers really want more time for collaboration. So we've built into the schedule um weekly meetings with the instructional specialists where we work on. Um, what is the learning of the unit connected to the standards? How do we communicate that to kids clearly? How do we identify the most important things to teach? Oh, and that's supposed to say curriculum revision, because that is certainly um another thing that although what it's on hold right now for ELA. We're continuing to revise that multi-age curriculum, so it is um. Uh, so it's uh aligned to the standards within that grade level for ELA. And then one area we're gonna really focus on is communicating our reasoning. So one of the things that we've noticed in math in particular, while sometimes kids can um come up with the right answer. Uh, that's not all they have to do anymore. They really need to explain how they know it, why they know it, they need to do that either in words or with the equations. And that is, if you remember, a key component of the claims on the smarter balance. Writing about reading is another way in literacy that we're helping kids develop. Um, a way to share their thinking using evidence from the text. It's not, I love this book about dogs. I have a dog at home. My dog's so smart. Like, that's nice, but that's not the purpose of this type of writing. This, the purpose of this type of writing is to say, back to that example, the theme of this story is. I know this because in the text it said, and you know, using a lot of text evidence to communicate what they're thinking. Um, about what they've read, and that's just one example. So uh with our continuous growth plan, we're going to monitor it. We're gonna record on those strategies, how they're going and collect data. It is a three year plan, some of the items will remain on there until we've accomplished them. And some of them will, you know, will circulate new ideas in um as. As they become common practice. We're gonna um through impact teams, through my goal setting meetings with teachers, through professional development. Or through data charts, we're gonna look at the artifacts that we need to and collect them. And then use them during impact teams. That'll be another way we can evaluate how our instruction is affecting student growth and learning. And um, we uh. I mentioned all those. One other thing that's on this list that we typically do too. Is learning walks where the staff gets into one another's classes. Uh, will answer, like pose a particular question. And then um we'll go in and see, how much do we see kids doing that? And then teachers get together and talk about that and say, oh, I didn't think about that idea. That's fantastic. I'm gonna try that with my students. And so it really allows us to have some strong instructional practices that we see across the. Um, school and can implement. That's the end.
I hope. Do you have any other questions that you would like to answer?
I'm I'm just wondering, how? Does the or or are these these um results. Backed into like teacher evaluations or how do the scores? Were not allowed to?
No.
And you mentioned that having done kind of a um, just a quick chart or a quick. Uh, kind of review of kids who started at hotel. Or K or K through six and how how they did. Is it, like, how difficult is it to pull that sort of data? Like, is that something that we could look at over like? I don't know, the last ten years, like to see, you know, cause it would be interesting to see how, you know, we've made quite a few changes to our curriculum, to our school setup.
Yeah.
Um, the teachers and it'd be interesting to see how that, you know, if if we can, you know. Identify any trends.
Yeah, this had would give you that grade level um information. And look at growth with the smarter balance. It has only been in existence since um, well, I only have it. When did they first start getting that, twenty fourteen, fifteen?
Fourteen fifteen.
Yeah, so fourteen fifteen was the first year that they gave the smarter balance. In this data, you can see um.
I love this chart, I think. But I was also sort of interested in that, never really thought much about how. Uh, if you're impacted by kids who come in.
Oh, you mean that.
Like into the. Class at different periods, you know.
That would be difficult to find. However, from this, I could certainly give you that information for um, you know, the, at least not a decade. But I could find that information for the past few years.
I'm just, I'm just sort of interested.
And throughout the grades.
Yeah, because there's so few kids. It's just, you know, to try, you know, make these big extrapolations from them.
Yeah.
It feels like it it adds a whole other level and you're also kind of pulling in whatever they learned from any other school, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Similar question, but on individual student basis, do you track students' progress um individually? Do you look at or just as a class core?
Yep, we do. I, you know, I um. All of this information, are you talking about each student with all of the assessments? Or are you speaking about a particular assessment?
That that looks at student by student individually, their growth over the course of multiple years to see if there are trends that way or.
I would say not yet. I would say not yet. But that chart that we put into place this year where we have student data at a glance will allow us to more easily look at that over time and particularly if they're with the same teacher. So like Mrs. Tallon, who had her kindergartners last year and they're now first graders. She really, like, that data will be really helpful, you know. Whereas her second graders had Mrs. McLeary last year. And how are they growing with Debbie as their teacher is something that we can look at. So we can look at, you know, the particular teacher, who they had, you know, how they're growing. We can do it from a teacher perspective or just an overtime perspective. So we will be able to do.
But we could look at, say, a particular child and say, on the STAR assessment, here's where they were in kindergarten, first grade, second, third, because we've got that longitudinal data, so we could do that.
Because we, because and the information on the front page was really um helpful, knowing that our free and reduced lunch has increased from sixteen to forty-three percent.
Yeah.
Was there a change in standard for um who qualifies for free and reduced lunch?
That's a really good question.
Or is it like changing demographics of our school or family?
I think it might be a combination of both.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know how they calculate that. I just got the data off of the, you know, the state.
It's the state standard whenever they come up with that.
Okay, but has the standard changed over the past years?
With the impact of COVID, did they reduce the threshold or?
They don't.
Yeah, I don't think they, well, I don't think the state reduced the threshold, but certainly family situations might have impacted that.
But I, is it a reflection of a changing demographic in our school or a change in in a threshold that just?
I'm gonna say.
Changes the number.
Based on what I know right now, I think it's a combination of both.
The um the food stands changed significantly.
Okay, and that's the same for the free and reduced lunch at school, okay.
I think the income requirement almost doubled, so it got twice as high if you still qualify.
And you can still qualify, thank you. Um, I was just wondering also, do we know what other districts in Connecticut might match the demographics that we see with the percent of special education students or students disabilities um and free and reduced lunch um?
Free and reduced lunch, they they put each district in what they call durs, right?
They're not even doing that anymore.
They're not.
They went from durs to ers.
Ers, okay, yeah, that's that's all. Um, I don't sure of these. So they're economic uh something groups, I think. So they try to, not for the special education, but they group similar districts together by um socioeconomic status.
Um, do we, is that a measure that you compare our district to or are we, or do not really?
I don't think we've had that level of data over the past few years, but I can certainly look into that.
Well, I was, I wonder if that's calculated by the town demographic or the school population demographic? Because our town population demographic is quite different from our school.
Yeah, very different, yeah.
Demographic population, it'd be interesting to.
But we've never had any need to like compare our free and reduced population to Coldberg or others. We've just never had a reason to.
I'm just thinking, if we, if we know there are other similar districts, districts that have the same, you know, set of circumstances that we're facing in terms of population um that are doing much better or much worse than we are, maybe we can maybe there's information to be learned from other districts.
Absolutely.
Their programs are there.
Yep.
So you said, I think that uh the STAR data is given three times a year, or the STAR tests are given three times a year? So has that already happened once for this year?
Yes.
And do you already have those results?
Yes.
Did you show us those?
No.
Oh, okay.
I only typically give you results from the end of the year, but I'm happy to give you some updated results. I think this is an interesting point based on what you're saying. So if you look in the contin- US growth plan and you looked on um the the page, I should number the pages, I guess that would be helpful because it's so long. But if you go to the student um achievement target two, which is bless you, the literacy achievement data. So the targets that I, that we set as staff for this year, we're still waiting for some data, which is why there's lines there. But everybody with me on that page, so, okay, right here, this page.
Three pages in, sorry.
Okay, so that chart lists all the assessment tools that we're going to look at to determine how our students are meeting those targets. So if you follow the STAR reading one across and you look at the data, this gives you end of the year data. And one of our teachers said, wait a minute, why is our target for this year sixty percent? But last year, sixty-two percent of our students met or exceeded the goal. I'm, we made that target based on the spring data. So when our students took the star in this in the, in the fall, when our students took the star this fall, um, the, the number of students who met or exceeded the goal was less than sixty-two percent. Again, we've had, you know, a lot of students move in, many of whom have um special needs. And so to make a reasonable target based on the fall um data, made it sixty percent. And it seems counterintuitive, but that we look at that spring deed or that fall data rather to kind of set targets for the end of the year.
And does that change when you look at the winter administration?
No, now then we kind of just, we stick with our target and and work to get to it by the end of the year. Regardless of who might move in and move out and.
Except that if you met your target or were really close, you wouldn't move the target.
Yeah, I think if we met it, we.
That's I'm happy.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Or we just increase it to sixty-five percent of our students met. So then the following year will set a reasonable achievable target based off of the last.
Are you mapping of the achievement data with the different strategies or um systems that have been adopted at hotel? Like the uh multi-age program or the new math curriculum that the region adopted or so that we can, is there, that we kind of look at the.
So you can see the impact.
I know it's recent years still, it takes a long time to.
Yeah.
And there are so many things that have changed, it would be really hard to attribute.
Sure.
A change positive or negative to any one factor. I mean, there are at least easily half a dozen ten things that we would look at in a given time period that are different than the year before or even six months before.
Those are things that are so hard to kind of wrap your head around. Because it seems like to make, you know, valuable decision about whether or not we're doing the right things, we need the sorts of data points. But those data points are so hard to tease out. So, I mean, imagine, so I imagine that there has to be a lot of just conversation about what the impacts of these things feel like they are, so.
I think the, you know, at a school level, the most important factor is the teacher that's standing in front of kids. Not to mention the the parents who are working with them at home and what they're able to, you know, help their child with. But if we just think about it purely from a school perspective, that adult who's standing up in front of those children and helping them learn throughout that year is regardless of the program, because you can give everybody a program to use and it's impossible to implement that program exactly the same way because we're all, you know, it's to your, it's a human uh, you know, formula. It's not a cookie cutter approach. There's been a zillion districts that have tried to have this one program be the be all, end all, and they implemented and it's it doesn't bear fruit. The best thing that we can do is get our teachers together uh um around how their kids are learning and identify what's the strategy we're going to use and then watch them use it and help our kids grow. So I I am again very excited about the staff that we have. I think we have high quality teachers in front of our students and um that, that is gonna be the biggest uh leverage point that is, you can't put that on a continuous growth plan. So we have to keep holding our teachers to high standards and give them the resources and time that they need so they can do their job effectively and provide structures that allow them to grow with one another. And you guys have done all of those things, so thank you for providing us with those tools and structures.
Well, thank you for all the um information on that very uh detailed.
You're welcome.
Kind of a question?
Under uh check authorization, what is Paradi and Son's getting paid ten grand for?
A new water view.
Ah, blew up. Okay.
Unexpectedly.
Looking at the line item in the budget for building repairs, is that where that?
An aging building and um I think we've pretty much exhausted our line item allocation and it's only December, so um yeah, we're, we're fingers crossed that we don't have any other big ticket items.
Okay, um. All right, so let's see, where are we? It's our principals report, so we're gonna move on to our standing committees. Personal negotiation did not meet, but um procurement and technology, November, you guys last time.
Of course, yeah.
Um, and finance and.
No, but on finance, um we've just started the budget process, so we're probably gonna wanna coordinate, start to look at calendars for and set some dates for, you know, the coming months for when finance people would wanna, the committee would wanna sit down and look at the rough drafts and and have some conversation about the budget as it moves forward and we develop that.
Well, tonight on our agenda, we are going to set all kinds of meeting dates, so let's set those to.
Add them, absolutely.
Um, policy, I think we should, we want to table that again, we don't have Jay.
Well, we do and we don't, we don't have Jay, so the ones that have been ongoing and there's nothing really urgent there. But we've had these health and wellness committee meeting today, and one of the things that we've been kind of waiting for policy to act on, I don't think we need policy, so I brought a copy of this policy um on, how would you pronounce, pediculosis, I can never.
Oh, yeah, that's fun.
To roll off of my hump. But uh the front piece is the current policy and there had, has been, you know, there have been several attempts to encourage districts to make changes. We did look at this a couple of years ago and at that time, the board um was not of the mind to make any changes. But at this point, health and wellness, along with our nurse, are strongly recommending that the board look at this revised proposed policy and consider moving towards this policy, which allows us to have kids in school much sooner. Um, the science is now confirming that there, the risk that used to be associated with headlights is nowhere near credible and there's no reason to keep kids out of school five, ten days. Um, and so if you read through this and we can then at the next meeting have a second reading and hopefully adopt it.
So.
Headlights is so bad, though. So I wasn't at the meeting this morning for this, but I was at the meeting where we did go over this, and I think it made more sense than what we originally had in place.
Okay, so we want to look at this for uh next time?
For conversation discussion at the next board meeting, yeah. But a lot of the myth, a lot of the assumptions, presumptions, assumptions around how license spread, how it, it just, the sci- science.
And wants to hit your head.
And certainly, the policy, we believe, is not going to, you know, contribute to um sharing of of headlights. But in any event, if you read this, we can have conversation about it next week.
It's just an excellent. I feel like I.
And then the others, I think we do need, you know, to wait um for Jay, for the chair, to be able to lead that conversation.
We're gonna have a lot to do.
We are. Oh.
All right then, so um for our communications.
Actually, required.
Committee.
Yeah, and I just launched, but I um I did not write this version of it and I didn't prove freedom. I just got it a couple hours ago, so you'll see some typos, John, and you can write them and make sure that we get them right for the next time. But they, I acknowledge that they are, there are a couple of typos in there.
No, no. Well, if you spelled particulosis incorrectly, I would have no idea.
Um, it sounds better than life, doesn't it?
I'm not sure. A bit about that uh we had about uh having memes to our meetings, different topics.
Yes, so when we went to the convention, it was actually very educational and stuff. And some of the things that um I found interesting that a lot of other schools do um and actually some superintendents kind of implement, is at the beginning of the year, they have a survey to the parents and the public of like what goals they wanna see the school meet, the the principal, the superintendent, the board. Um, it was, I guess, back to the board or whoever would collect them. And we would address one of those questions or say, this is where we're at as far as meeting like a goal in each meeting. Um, so there's more, I guess, answering questions.
And the things that people are really interested in, they can comment, they've got comments or questions and.
Yeah, or topic.
Right, it's like a goal or a topic that they plan to see, well, my notes here, that they wanted, the direction they want the school to go in kind of thing and kind of have more communication. Um, that was one.
So I think that idea was, we spent a little time trying to define what that schedule would be set out at the beginning of the year. Then we have sort of like a meeting focus or, you know, an agenda item that talks about that topic. Then people would, in the public would know, like, we're gonna talk about that topic at that time.
Homer.
And then.
It's a plan.
Exactly. We're not quickly running through them, you know, or, you know, kind of referring back to, you know, snippets of conversations here and there. But we'd have sort of these kind of anchors along the years that people could know how to interact and know when to bring feedback and know uh when it was being discussed and maybe to learn a bit more about.
Well, we, we do the annual parent surveys and it would be something we could actually include in that to say, you know, at the end, what, you know, what is it, what are the topics or areas of interest that you would like to have addressed at, you know, our monthly board meetings? And then we could have the the summer to look at those and come up with maybe an agenda calendar of topics.
Yeah, kind of like the dress.
Or would you prefer to see a dedicated survey or a question with just that?
They, they would, I gather, that works for them and like, obviously, things will work different for people, that they address one thing at a time.
I mean, in terms of getting a list of topics, would you want a dedicated survey, a one-question survey to go out to parents? Or do you think that including that at the end of the year survey, because we we push that out, we remind people it's an easy survey? Do you think it would be?
I don't know.
I think I would love to be able to start sooner rather than later. So if we were to send out a survey that, you know, said, you know, we're, we're interested in uh, you know, addressing or uh reviewing the things that our, our population is interested in. You know, what topics might like, what topics.
New year resolution.
What kind of, yeah, exactly. And then if we receive that and it's somewhere in January, we could, you know, they don't have to be like hugely mapped out conversations. I feel like if they were just kind of, like, we just had these sort of guideposts along the way, so. Um, and then we'd say, we could even start, if we received it in January, we could by February, like, start putting on our agenda, like, you know, I don't know, interest topic over the, of the meeting or something like that.
Um, one of the other things was to, I believe, you do this already, is um when there was public like speakers or that had questions and stuff, that either the principal or the superintendent followed up with that parent on that question and kind of said, did we answer your question? Did we address what you're, again, to kind of have that transparency between the school and the community, which I thought was kind of interesting, because then there was, I guess, uh districts that don't do that. Um, and they, they talked more about like the board that's setting goals for the school and superintendents and what, you know, you would expect to see again to kind of align with what the community's asking, I guess, during the survey, to what we want to see the growth of the school together, um kind of like all just. That was kind of interesting. And another thing that we spoke about too was um. That was kind of interesting, and another thing that we spoke about too was um possibly hiring a communications committee. Because keeping up with everything by by one, like you update the stuff like that is a lot for one person. But there's also things that are missed that don't go out to the public, like we had um. A former boat tells who make honor roll, like things like that, like you don't see. The growth from hotel to regional, cause I know that's a big concern that they're struggling when they get to regional, but there's a lot of kids who. Left hotel and they're not struggling um and they do like little webinars um every month to kind of. Highlight the school and show like who the face of the school is, like, well, I want to be the face of the school for you. Um.
So you mean hire someone to put out like social media.
Yeah, to kind of keep up with those things, like.
You mean like hire them for money? Well, we did pay, we paid, um we did have like a, we we were paying her a hundred dollars a month, I think, for. Uh one of our, like a stipend for one of the um aides to do. Uh, social media posts last year. Um, I wonder, I don't know if we could. Find that, find a person like that again who'd be interested in doing it, or if we look at a a broader position or something where. And I think Janet's point is good, it's she's thinking even beyond like what's putting out what's happening in the school, maybe kind of. Taking this broader approach of like, you know, where are where are our students now or something like that, like. Is is that right, Jen?
Yeah, because I think there's a lot of misconception in the community that kids are leaving hotel and struggling. At regional and other thing, and that's really not the case, but you don't see that, you know, you don't, you often hear about the kids who are struggling versus the kids who actually succeeded and. Made honor role or graduated valedictorian of their class and stuff, um so I I think it's important to highlight those things, cause.
I think the hotel has had more valedictorians than. Any other.
Right, but you don't hear about that, you know, um so those are just some things that I thought like were interesting.
One of the things we talked about was how well Northwestern frankly like toots its own horn, like. I don't know, y'all know that they're the blue ribbon school, I think y'all know, right? Like, if you walk in that school, it is every fifteen steps, you see a reminder of that, and um, you know, if we just. They obviously make a real effort to. Uh. Make that an an important uh message that they put out and coordinating that message is a hard thing. It's just a hard thing to to do unless you can really devote some time to it, so we were trying to figure out, we know that the. Administration is busy, I know that, I know that when I've tried to do this in the past and I have trouble staying focused and getting it done. So I feel like, I mean, maybe we can find a volunteer who can do it, but um it might be a good, might be worthwhile to. To pay someone or to find someone who is an expert in this that would be able to, you know, give some guidance and good and good advice.
Actually, this just came to my mind too, I almost wonder, cause you know, like even like the school plays and concerts and stuff like that, you know. You're usually videotaping, I wonder if. Maybe we can get students in the school to kind of make like a team or a club. That who aren't involved in those particular activities to kind of say, hey, you can videotape this, you can kind of like lean them into that direction of. I guess.
I love that.
Them doing it versus paying somebody or um having Lauren do a step from home, like. Kinda. Guide them into this direction of doing it like a little club, like gather a couple of kids who are interested in like the communications and things like that. Um, that just popped into my head, cause I feel like some even fifth, sixth graders might find that. Interesting and fun to kind of do, um but that seemed to be pretty popular in um the meeting that I went to.
Maybe student council. Would be could take on a communications project. I don't know if they'd want to, but um of course, they'd have to be monitored.
But I mean, that might be something that. Could benefit them and, you know, keeps them also interested.
I wonder, do we have any parents or any community members who have an interest in being involved, who have experience in that? That would would want to volunteer and support a a marketing communication campaign or effort. Um, I I'm not sure like where we would begin in the budget to begin to, you know, put a placeholder and. Yeah. And then I just wondered, like I, like I could reach out, but man, what? Like, what is their procedure for getting this message again, you know, what are the steps that they, so I don't mind reaching out to.
Like, for instance, I just noticed on Northwestern's social media, I saw this fabulous picture of Tobin. He looks like a news correspondent, he's so cool, um their model UN, you know, they they had a trip to Model UN and they took these great pictures and they posted that. I wonder, it would be interesting to know what their procedure is, if they have like, if the teachers are responsible for these posts, if they have someone who's dedicated on the staff. Like, I don't even, like, at the Honor Society induction the other night, there was a man with a big fancy camera, so. I I don't know if they have a photographer on staff or if that's somebody.
Yeah.
Do you know, John?
You guys have an Instagram account or hotel?
We do, yes.
Who manages it?
Uh, I have access, Lauren has access.
It's probably your first step, cause if once you start following someone, you usually don't unfollow them.
We should go, you should follow it, cause it's a beautiful reference at the beginning.
People don't realize we have an Instagram account.
That's what I'm saying, if nobody knows that, and you can put that into a project, it's very easy. Um. When Rex was in the sixth grade, he posts everything from my coffee shop in the city. Cause I couldn't do it, I didn't know how to do certain.
I think a lot of it is like, so to answer your question, like, I wouldn't mind doing that, I have experience doing that and whatever, but again, it's. Very time consuming, so for one person to do it where like updating uh Instagram page every day, like we obviously can't be here forever.
Right, well, you need somebody who's in the school, which Kimbug was great at, because um she was here.
I was trying to think like, you get a group of kids that are here and, you know. It was just a thought.
Yeah.
Um, to kind of.
On staff and and maybe consider stipending a staff member who, you know, would take ownership of that. Um, we we could.
This is the service contract line item in the superintendent's budget.
Yeah.
But a a reasonable, for example, for years, Savage Freeze has taken, you know, pictures and. I mean, he doesn't do it much anymore, but um he used to take pictures of all the athletic events and.
Like I still many field day last year, I sent it to you to upload and so, but it's like, obviously, we can't get every event.
I wonder if like. You know, maybe that's something our communications committee could do, reach out to some of our photographers down town and say.
See if we can get some volunteers.
And if we had a talent, if we, you know. If we were, if we were organized, that see, I have these great ideas, I just don't, you know, like, I will follow through, so I just put them out there, maybe someone else will wanna follow through, like. We had a calendar of events of everything that was happening, then we could like build a chart and we could, you know, ask these different photographers who were in town to cover different ones. I mean, we wouldn't catch everything, like the stuff that goes on Class Dojo and stuff, but we could catch. You know, some of the bigger ones, we could go to Good News Gatherings, we could go to the, we go to Field Day and the Play and the Veterans Day and like.
Well, we would, we have people here who could take pictures, we take pictures all the time, but for one person to be the point person to send them to. And load them on Instagram or to, you know, take the next steps, right, you know, getting the the pictures wouldn't be the problem, it would be the. Yeah.
Yeah. But it is time consuming to upload them to every platform and to stay on top of it.
The hard part is too, when you try to get a team of people updating things, cause I've done this lots of times now, when there's not one person who is. Like, it's their responsibility to do it, it just kind of fades away and it's.
Right, I think the a good first step is for me to find out how are they doing it and who's doing it up there.
But yeah, that that was it, I was just like, I guess the bigger thing that I wanted the board to consider was. The questionnaire for the beginning of the school to send out to the parents, you know, goals, where they wanna see, you know, the community. What they expect in the school and stuff like that.
Sure, we can make that happen anyway. If there's a specific language that you'd like, Janet, you know, send it to me and we can. Yeah, if you know who presented that and they have surveys, they'd be willing to share, that'd be helpful.
It was the superintendent of West Park, I hope to say. But I I just thought it was interesting that they do that with their with their community and stuff like that, kind of. Have the community set goals and just be addressed as they go out throughout the year.
Thank you very much. Uh, health and wellness, you said you had a meeting today?
I did not attend the meeting this morning.
Donna, I missed it. And so, uh shared services. PTO. We have a meeting tomorrow. For the PTO, um upcoming in this month, though, is the holiday fair. Um, the the hotel's school swag um was delivered, I know, was uh. Given out, um and I've had quite a few people tell me that they hadn't seen it or heard about it, so. I think it'd be a good thing for us to run again, so with the school. Yeah, like that stuff. Um, first straight to take.
It was not in town.
So nice.
Yeah.
I'm hyping this, my children are not, or I'm assuming you're not gonna watch this uh meeting, uh, cause I'm giving them this for Christmas. Like seeing them around the school.
Yeah, they're great, I, they look fantastic, so.
Lots of school spirit, okay.
Kids were wearing it for a snapshot for the next. Well, put it on there, do you know if um? Like the Berkshire store or any, if there's any place in North Park that would, you know, wanna have a tiny little section where they sell hotels?
I feel like Ryan would.
Yeah, I think so too, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I feel like Ryan or even like the hub.
So does anybody have like a really? A relationship with any of those places?
Might have the more in.
Now, for those things, we could put up, well, we could put up a little flyer, but we didn't order. We only ordered what we, we don't have a supply of them, um but uh.
Even if people didn't buy a lot of this stuff, if they were going into the Berkshire store like a couple of times a week or going into the pub or. Even a corner in the library where you walk in and you see, oh, you know, hotel, a path.
It's just a reminder too that the school exists.
It's there, it's just to keep it sitting people's awareness, you know, and. Again, just having a sweatshirt and have, you know, whatever, a little something to catch people's attention.
I also like the idea of, you know, there are these order-on-demand services that I think work well, like Bonfire is one, and there's, there's others too. Like Northwestern has a school, has a store that they um use where you can order anytime, then. So maybe it would be worthwhile to set up something like that, now that we've had this initial.
Yeah.
Or Ham's tool, they do it for all their fundraising, you can do it through, and that you actually have your own website.
Do, is it bonfire that they use, do you know?
I'm not sure, there was a woman in the band, um cause the the band just wanted to start doing things like that, but I know. Stadium Systems, they have one that you they'll set up your own website, you go in, you have the, you just pick and you pick a color of what you want. Like a shirt, you know.
Then you could do one at a time.
Yeah.
The Northport Fire Department uses stadium systems.
And they can order one thing at a time?
For one at a time, yeah, and the website set up for you, so you go to Stadium Systems website and you type in Northport Fire Department and all the swag shows up.
Oh, that's your stadium system, cause that's a nice local.
I will point out, Parker's sweater has been washed with a few times, cause I don't think he's taking that off.
Okay, um, school safety and security.
We met back in October, um. We discussed cameras and um communication. Very uh emergencies. Um.
Cameras are pretty much all that, right, Kathy, they're winding up.
We're, yeah, we're.
I think we're scheduled to meet next week.
Yeah.
But I mean, of of the region that is charitable, uh those are the most significant.
Is there a camera out on the? Um.
So there's three, they, there's three on one of the poles out there, but they haven't connected those yet, they just, they're coming back to do those.
Oh, yeah.
There's, and it is the playground.
Almost there.
It's gonna eventually be back.
Are we gonna get the big green slide?
I was actually going to follow up with Matt Riska this week, um cause as of now, I believe he still says no parts have come in yet. So.
It um and. Hasn't yet been. Time for board finance, although Amy, let's see, you went to, you went to a meeting since our last, no, you haven't, we just met, not that one. I mean, I can't.
Yeah, we had a special meeting.
Yeah, and it was late.
Yes, okay. Okay, alright, so.
So the 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 motel adventure group um met, we had tried to set us another meeting. Um. Right for Thanksgiving, but uh weren't able to, but uh we had one, I guess, back in. Early November and. Discuss a lot of things that are that are probably my concern about. All things were event talking about the the student population and and. Long-term strategic planning and and resources in the community, um so we're continuing that conversation.
Alright, thank you for uh coordinating those efforts, these ones now, yeah. Okay, um. Two ninety-seven thirty, um. Yeah. Next, our business, next on our agenda is unfinished business, um we talked about student achievement. Um, I'd actually like to table the multi-age and curriculum creation process again, and that's something, sorry, we keep giggling, but I. I just wanna keep our meetings at reasonable length. Um. So moving on to new business. Let's take a look at all these meeting dates. So we wanna get our schedule really nicely and tightly set up for next year. Hope it's done, so it's time for us to all be back on. So first, let's take a look at the committee. The standing committee on meeting day. So now what would happen with these meetings? Um, we're going to be uh very careful about our posting of these to make sure that we're doing everything correctly, which means that they uh. The meetings will be posted now and then the agenda has to be posted. Uh, week before, well, four days.
Yeah. She wants from there. Um, the Thursday before the meeting, they're supposed to be. Um, for the public twenty-four hours before the meeting, but she would like them on Thursday.
Um, so she would like.
For me, the meeting's on Tuesday.
Okay, but now for the committee meetings, which are different days of the week, you have to be, or the. The ask is forty-eight hours before the meeting, right, so. Um, so if you are the chair of any of these committees, I. Would ask you, can we send our agendas to you, Kathy? So let's say, why don't we do it three business days before the meeting, we send the agenda, or yeah, the agenda to you. And then, then you'll take care of sending it in to. Um, the town hall for us.
Right, so these meetings will all be on Tuesdays as well, it looks like.
Oh, they are all on Tuesdays, you're right, so we should get it to you by like Thursday, by Thursday. Okay, does that make sense? So if you are a chair of any of these committees, to beat this dead horse, I want to say, I want you to send the agenda to Kathy. Uh, by Thursday before your meeting. And in the event that a meeting needs to be canceled or postponed or whatever, that's fine to do, we just have to post notice of that. So, uh. You know, just confirm your meetings, this is, this is me talking to myself, confirm your meetings before, you know, before they happen, so to make sure you're able to get there. Um, and if you have to change it, then, you know, make sure you change it then.
So on this proposed standing committee meetings, the affiliation liaison reporting are not under like health and wellness shared services. Cause they don't, they're not required. They're not board subcommittee, the only um requirement now is subcommittees. Not for the standing subcommittees.
So when I wanna call a health and wellness, I don't have to.
And because that that's, that's not a board subcommittee, really, that's a state required committee. So, that is not required.
Okay, good. Now, if we wanted to do a personnel negotiations meeting, we would have to set, we'd have it as a special meeting and we'd have to set the agenda and it had to be. By Thursday before it, or, you know, forty-eight hours before, right?
Correct, but it it's. Rare because that committee is exempt if you're discussing negotiations or contracts.
Oh.
And really, that's.
Which is all we do.
So I'm not sure that that's gonna be, you know, I think it's not gonna be a relevant point for. For finance, for uh personal negotiation.
Okay, how about for finance, so finance, we should start, we should actually set some meetings down, Mary, that that said. When you happen to step out of the room, that we need to make sure that we. Uh, set some of those, cause now we're starting our budget time. So, you're the chair, right? Yes, um, when would you like our meetings?
Um.
Typically, we begin to talk about proposed um budgets in in February at the board meeting, so we probably wanna be at least. January, once or twice in January. January once or twice in January.
So let's take a.
Right, because we have two board meetings scheduled in January, two in February specifically.
Right, so, and what usually happens is that we don't have full board meetings, but those two dates are already set aside and we, we use those for finance and budget conversations.
So let's see, our meeting, our board meeting, full board meeting in January is January third.
Correct. But then, but then there's second ones, September, January seventeenth and February twenty-first.
Yeah, do you want to have a, the border finance, I mean, uh?
Sure, yeah, I mean, we, we, we should keep those.
Oh, like, keep it on seventeen?
Just keep them in, and then they'll, they'll just be finance meetings, or you'll just have to keep them as support meeting? I mean, the whole board are just signing to leave.
What if we plan to do January tenth just to start, like? Is that too early, or January twenty-fourth?
So you don't wanna do the seventeenth?
Well, what if we wanted the, if we want the board, the full board to meet on the seventeenth? Isn't that what we have?
We've, as long as I've been, we've never had the second January meeting, we put it there for just in case, we've never, ever met. And typically, then what happens is the finance people meet and they use that time, but whatever you want.
Or there's a snowdown, there, we have seventeen.
Would have seventeen.
So, I would say either, either we would meet those two days, January seventeenth, February twenty-first at the regular meeting time, or if there is a regular or a a full board meeting, then have it at the earlier time, that, you know, meet at four-thirty instead.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so we should know a week or so before, whether it's gonna be a full.
So we're gonna, we're gonna put a finance meeting on the tenth?
No, no.
No, the seventeenth, the seventeenth, two weeks, yeah.
So do you want me to put that on the meeting dates, or are we gonna keep it as needed, and then just, I will upload an agenda, I'll send an agenda to the town if you have.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think you're sure.
But, 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 well, and, on, on would we wanna have it a regular meeting time, or, or would it be better, would it be more convenient to have it at whatever?
It would be more convenient, but I don't know if you and Jay and, and Anne, you know, what, what works for you, so we don't have to decide on the time, right, yeah, if you and Jay and Anne wanna talk about, like, what timing was good for you, I'm.
Right.
So it's just a free.
I can't remember what. I have a lot of flexibility, so I could figure out a way to leave at four-thirty, I can't remember if Jay teaches then.
Sorry, it says John, Amy, and Anne.
Oh.
Sorry, I have not given my.
Amy, what is your bill, baby?
Tuesdays and Thursdays with that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are one.
I, I, I totally.
Must have been a change from.
Because it was Jay, wasn't it, Jay last year? I know it was Jay.
I think it was, and then Amy Joy.
I ended up on a paper or somewhere along the lines about my knowledge too.
That's what happened, really, don't come to the board meeting.
I ended up on the committee, somewhere the communications.
Sorry, and chair.
Um. So, I'm sorry, Amy, are, are you available on Tuesdays?
Tuesdays, uh.
Not four-thirty.
Five, 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 yeah, five.
My, my guess is for, for Jay, it'll be six.
But Jay's not.
But Jay, Jay's not on. I stalked your room. And Jay is not on finance, it's Amy. He, he was last year, I know he was, but Amy wasn't here then. So.
It's a question, yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm flexible.
Is that good with you, with you, Ann?
That works for me.
On the seventeenth, five o'clock?
Yeah, seventeen.
And then same on February twenty-first.
And, and then February twenty-first, same thing, five.
Yep. And they're, they're both days after holidays.
Five o'clock, okay. Great.
Okay, so can, I I don't know that we need, do we need to vote on these meetings?
No, don't have to.
All right, so just gonna.
I don't have to send this to?
No, I think you should send.
You have to send them, but the board doesn't have to vote to approve these dates.
Those they have.
Just the vote to approve the board of ed meeting, yes. But the subcommittee meetings, they just have to be posted, and then the other piece is that the meet, I believe the minutes have to be posted within seven days after the meeting, so the chair will have to get those three, you know, the minutes to, um. Posted.
Yeah, so should we send them to the town hall, or should we send them to you? What's better for you?
Doesn't matter, whatever, whatever works is.
I think if it's all right with you, I think it's best for us to send them to you.
Okay.
Because then if you, if you happen to notice that we don't have them to you on time, you could remind us, maybe like get on the ball.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so chairs, please try to give Kathy a day before, so that she has an extra, so she has a day.
Yes, because God forbid Kathy, if she's out or not here, she's gonna need some words over them.
Yeah, yeah, so we should probably try to get minutes done within, like, two or three days.
That'd be great.
And again, minutes really only need to be, I, I know that it is often nice when you're reading minutes to have them tell more of a story, but minutes by law only need to be who attended, motions made, um, and.
Votes.
And, yeah, so there's votes, it's when motions are made and the, and what the, what the, uh, outcome of the vote is, and then when it is adjourned. Okay, um, great, so that's it for standing committee meeting dates, now let's look at the general board meeting dates, does anyone have any issues with these? Now, traditionally, we had that, have had that August meeting at like two-thirty or whatever it was, but that caused some, uh, ripples in the, in the, uh, public last time, why?
Because they felt they weren't able to make it to attend if they had public comments.
There's another one we do in August, we do in the early afternoon to approve the bus routes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we always do, and again, in nine years, we've never had anyone come, and I would, you know, suggest that, you know, if you had it at, you know, six o'clock, there's still are going to be come, but people are on vacation, people, you know, have evening events, so I'm not sure that the board or you, whatever you, you want to do, but I think, um, it's.
Well, the reason to have it in the middle of the day was that it was easier for the the school staff, right? Was that the idea? I don't even remember, I, I feel like it's always been.
When I got it, it was always that way, and typically, there'd be, you know.
So you're around here usually at three, four in the afternoon, I don't know, so.
In the earlier years, like, it might have been the Sally thing, it might have pleased, you know, seated me, but, um, the board would have some kind of a, a luncheon.
Yeah, we would do a luncheon for them down in the cafeteria.
Board would get together and have lunch, have, have their meeting as a little, you know, social and business, mix a little business with pleasure, but that was just, has been precedent for like Kathy said, forever, um, doesn't mean it has to be that way moving forward.
What's the feeling of this board?
I didn't see a problem with the two-thirty, and I think because it's not like, everyone's like, a real board meeting, but like you said, you're just approving the bus schedule and stuff, it's not really talking about anything that's going on throughout that year because we're not there yet. You know? I'm fine with the two-thirty.
I think we have a host of ways to, to attend the meeting now, including a virtual option, um, and maybe it's just that communication can go out to the, the hotel families or in the North Park now that heads up the early board meeting, it's gonna happen earlier than normal, and here's where you can send public comment if you want to, or correspond it.
I mean, do people like it being in the, like, in the afternoon, is it somehow better that way, or is, does it not matter at all?
Don't have a preference.
Because this probably is a little a little harder for me in the middle of the day.
Well, what's better for you now?
Go earlier.
Madam Chu. For you.
It is the summer.
By thirty. A M. Um, what they, is that, it's the same Tuesday, right? It doesn't really matter to me, I'm fine with sticking with the tradition of having it that day, it's a different, it's just kinda different.
Wasn't it?
It's the same.
Yeah, I think this year it was at four, so. Is four work better for you?
It was, I think it was at two.
It was at two, yeah.
This, this year?
Yeah.
Oh. It seems like a long time.
I know.
I don't, I'm not really even sure, it's so far away, it makes.
And then there was saves, the meeting, like, right after, I mean, that was.
All right, well, let's do something different, we'll have our summer splash four P M meeting on August.
Four P M, okay.
So it's not so far away from the end of the workday. Okay.
And then just to note, because November seventh is election day, the November meeting is the following Tuesday, it'll be the second Tuesday, not the first.
Oh, so I don't have to put that in?
Oh, god.
Cancel appointment.
We did have the two-thirtieth.
Oh, just two here. Do, do you want two-thirds, John?
Oh, I don't.
Okay, all right, that's a four. All right, so with these, um, these dates, four P M on the twenty-second, and noting that it's November fourteenth, which is on a different from our regular schedule. Um, would anyone like to make a motion that we approve these dates?
Probably make a motion of these, these dates. At night.
Would anyone like to make a second? All those in favor?
Right.
Uh, opposed? Okay, the motion's up. Okay. The school calendar, do we wanna look at that?
Yeah, we would. But you don't have to vote on that tonight, but, um, typically, we'd like to get it out to parents, you know, sooner than later, but we've got plenty of time if you wanna post going to vote.
I don't have any, uh.
Need a copy in?
No, it's gotta be in this box.
And this calendar does reflect the additional half-days for professional development, just to be clear that those are in here.
So does this jide with the other calendars in the districts?
Yeah, I met with superintendents last week, and, um, our April vacation is consistent the start of the school year is consistent. All the major, um, we have several that correspond to half-days as well as the, the full PD days, so that there are opportunities for us to do regional PD like we did this year.
And April, did you say April vacation is the same?
Same, yeah, and it's also the same as, um, the, the rest, so outside of the region, it's consistent with what all the other towns, you know, are, are doing in the upper, the northwest corner.
Okay.
It's, it's been traditionally the third week, th- this year we moved it to the second week because it was so close to the good Friday break that we, you know, people thought it would work well to back it up to the long weekend, but traditionally, it's always the third week, so Easter is very early this in this year, um. So it wouldn't make any sense to try to move it to the first week in April.
Okay, um. I think we should just go ahead and vote on this calendar unless anyone has some, uh, specific reasons that we shouldn't be waiting. Does anyone have any questions, or would you like to make a motion? Or if you want to wait, let it explain, uh, what's on your mind?
I move to approve the calendar?
Okay, we have a motion, you'd like to make a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
No?
Yeah.
This is do, do discussions, or something you wanted to, uh, is there a reason why you wanna think about?
Uh, no, I don't wanna think about it, I actually did compare it to all the other school district calendars, and they do kind of fall in line, but I think the more half-days we have, I think the more half-days that are approved each year, we're gonna end up having a calendar of half-days. That's kinda just my thought, that doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna happen, but I feel like there's already a lot of half-days.
Okay, so you have, you have concerns about the number of half-days that there not be enough, like, teaching hours?
Right. I think more so now too, with that gap with COVID and stuff, I think the more hours that the kids have in class, I think would be beneficial for them. Although I do understand the professional development for the teachers and stuff, um. I just feel like it would be more beneficial to not add more half-days right now.
Okay, um.
Just wanna reiterate, when I met with the Curriculum and Technology, um, Subcommittee, the teacher voice at that meeting, um, so the, the most helpful thing, I think especially because we have a very unique staffing situation this year going into next year with a, a group of individuals who haven't worked together, haven't worked, um, in this school, um. The, the, the one asked that they have had is time to understand the school, time to understand the kids, time to understand the curriculum to get on the same page, um, and what we don't have as a small school is the chance for, um, like, that cross colleague, um, you know, third grade teacher to third grade teacher, or sixth grade teacher to sixth grade teacher, just because we don't have two sixth grade teachers, so the more, um, opportunities the, the teachers have to compare notes to steal that, you know, thirty minutes, and they found on, on Wednesday accidentally because all the specials and lunches and recesses will rely, uh, lapped over, um, they, they jumped onto that voluntarily, and it was the one thing that, that they asked. No, so it was set, there's two things that, or one was a, and one was, um, uh, was just, please, the more time we have to meet together, um, the more beneficial it's going to be, so it was just that the teacher asked that, um, I was asked to bring back to the board that kind of initiated this, um, taking those three half-days in the beginning of the year and spreading them out, and then it was one additional or two?
Just one.
Just one, so it's one additional half-day from what we have currently been doing.
Well, anyhow, if I can just comment too, from my perspective, those, the half-days that we have for professional development, every minute is totally utilized, maximized, and there's so much that's coming down the pike, that continues to come down the pike that, you know, it, it really is a great opportunity for teachers, and the time that they spend together talking and planning and sharing, it does translate into a benefit instructionally, you know, so I think that, you know, we do lose those minutes, but there is a lot of value to teachers collaborating and working and understanding and looking at standards and sharing strategies and successes that really give back to the instructional hours that we still have. Um, I know there are people who will say, oh, you know, those half-days, they just get wasted. And, and, you know, I've seen that happen in places, but that does not happen here.
I, I don't think they, they get wasted, and, you know, and I respect that the teachers wanna, like, get together, I just feel like currently at the moment, there's just a lot.
Yeah, i- it's one every month, yeah.
Okay, okay, well, um, well, we had a, a motion made and seconded, um, uh, we had three uh, in favor, one opposed, so the motion carries. Okay, and we are, um. Um, we have a motion.